And it was afterward, some people that were there.
Call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk, if you would take the.
Is everyone alive? Okay, Mr. Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Paesno.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sabater.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
The council members, present.
Thank you, and we have Pastor Williams here to do our invocation. Lead us from that place.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I'm going to take a moment in this invocation to pray on a broader scale for those who serve across America as police officers. In the last 96 hours, we've had police officers attempt assassinations in three different areas of our country. And that breaks my heart, and it should break the heart of every peace-loving citizen. So I pray for those that have had surgeries, those that are recovering, and I ask you, Lord, to turn the hearts and minds of those who would prevail against our law enforcement officers. The other is the American soldier as well. We've lost troops in two different incidents since Friday in Afghanistan. I pray for those who are the front line for freedom's sake, that keep our nation safe and free, and protect our interests at home and throughout the world. Lord, please as well protect our military men and women from the extreme harm and danger of serving this nation. Back closer to home, Lord, with the weather fronts moving in tomorrow, there's a lot of folks in our community and beyond that will have to arise to this occasion with slick roads, Lord, and hampered traffic, and a lot of other issues that the public faces. I want to pray for our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, first responders, our street department, county bridge and road, sheriff's department, and MoDOT, who will work tirelessly to allow us to be able to travel and be safe during this upcoming two or three days of extreme cold and probably slick weather. I'm grateful, Lord, for those who continue to serve this community, or are dedicated to our growth and prosperity. And as we progress, Lord, all of those who have worked throughout the year on infrastructures, those that are part of new building projects, and those that oversee it, all of our tradespeople working through the winter, to continue to move us forward, please keep them as well safe and prospering. For our mayor and administrators, our council persons, all of our department heads, and those that lead this city's work day by day, clear down to those who wear the boots and do the hard work. Keep us, Lord, together and our services met every day. Thank you, Lord, for those who serve this city. Bless this session tonight, those that have come from the community to share. I pray, Lord, for the discussions and any decisions that are made here tonight, that first they're pleasing to you, and that they will move our city together as one. Thank you for hearing this prayer and for watching over us all in Christ we pray. Amen.
Face the flag.
Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Brilliant, sir.
Okay, at this time, we would entertain comments from visitors. If you would, please state your name and address, and then keep your comments to five minutes, or less.
Hello, my name is Chuck Garrett. I'm a real estate broker here in Fulton, Missouri. I own the office building down at 110 West Fourth, which is in the proposed historic district. So I want to thank you all for letting me come to speak real quick. Thanks for putting the post on Facebook. That's how I became aware of this new ordinance. I was able to speak to some property owners, some other people in my industry, real estate, title appraisal. I have a few things that, as it is written, I can understand the intent and the goal for historic preservation. There's a few things that I made notes on. You know, myself as a realtor, one of the things that we do is to protect homeownership's rights. And so I just feel that there's a few things in there that are going to affect some rights of an owner, and then marketability and values of certain homes within the five districts with new guidelines they're going to have to follow, even though they're not mandatory, the steps you have to go through, and then the cost that involved to have things drawn to scale, or you're going to have an engineer involved, you're going to wait 30 days, engineer can't make it, it's out now 60 days, we've got a weather impact. So there's just a few things that I feel need tweaked in this, and I would just ask that the council maybe review, or have a third party, or some people in the industry in town, maybe consult with them before I leave the issue further. I thank you for your time.
Very good. We would like to maybe hear some specifics from you on that at some point, too.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else that wishes to come before the council?
Oh, and are you guys actually here for your event request?
Yes.
Okay, we actually have you on the agenda. We'll get right to you. Sorry about that.
Cool. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on. Our next item is approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Tonight, we have a request from David Beaver for the annual Independence Day parade on July 4th. And this request has been approved by Chief Myers, and FPD will assist along the parade route. And that is all we have this evening.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We'll have a parade. Thank you. And at this time, I see Chief Myers heading out the door. We want to, yeah, we want to wait just a minute. He wants to show us, show and tell something here.
As most of you know, we get a bulletproof vest grant every year, and this year, we looked at a lot of different vests, and I thought I'd like to show you all one of the ones that most of the guys like, a lot of the departments are going to. And so we are going to be going out for bids on this vest. Our vest grant pays half, so we don't know what it's going to be. Most vests are between 700 and 900, so we won't be able to equip everyone with this vest to start with, but we'll get a few along every year as we can. This vest, this vest is one that a lot of departments are going to for several reasons. Number one, it takes a lot of that weight off of your belt. We're carrying so much more weight than we used to, that it's a lot more comfortable, and a lot of guys are having back and hip problems around.
Model, do a little model.
There you go, all right.
A lot of guys are having the back and hip problems, and that takes it off also.
Yeah, there you go.
Also, if you're in your car, and you've got equipment back here.
Yes.
It hits your nerves back there, and so that also causes problems. A pocket went to this vest, and they're having less problems with hips and physically, and it's just so much better to put weight.
I'm sorry, Chief, I don't know our model.
Yeah, our name, Tim House.
Oh, yes.
And just me looking at it, being on the outside, if you're going to be in the office for it, it'd be very.
I like that, yeah.
When it's hot, they can come in and take their vest off, do the report, and cool down, or the other one, you'd have to rest and take it off.
Very, yeah.
Oh, but it has pockets everywhere. In the front, there's pockets, the pockets up underneath here, underneath here. Actually, inside the vest, there's hidden pockets for different items. It's literally just covered with pockets. I haven't found them all yet.
And the guy left us this vest, so I could show you all points.
Sure.
And also, the body cam goes on this side, this side.
Okay.
Places for that. Mine, some people put their mics up here.
Up here, he's got his own.
It's got on either side.
Very nice.
I just thought it was a good-looking vest, looks good, and it helps the guy got a lot.
Can the plates come out and be washed and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Everything can be taken off. You can literally just take off the outer vest, throw the whole outer, I mean, take all the equipment out, and then throw the whole thing in the washing machine and be washed. Where like the old ones, you had to take it apart carefully, hand wash them, which would usually be about a two-day ordeal to actually wash them, because you couldn't put it back together without everything being completely dry and clean and everything else. Otherwise, they mildew, and then you smell like mildew today.
Very nice.
Okay, any other questions?
It looks bulky underneath the arms. Is that with all the stuff?
Comparatively, no. Like, this is the first time I've worn it, was just this past half hour and hour, and I can tell you, just sitting down in the patrol car feels completely different.
Even with the flashlight and everything, and the radio and everything?
No, not at all. Like comparatively, like it's the other ones, I mean, I guess it's a little more right here, but I can actually bend down, because you'll see a lot of houses when they go to bend down, they have to do the thing of apparently bending down, where I can actually like move around.
At the waist.
And sit down comfortably, and it feels good. So far, I love it.
Coverage is still the same, though?
Oh, yeah.
On the vest?
I think you still do anything, and the other.
No, I meant the protective, protective covering is still.
I think it's the same.
Catch one, so, was it wood class better, wasn't it?
Was the glass better, was it? It's probably a ton easier to sit in a chair. Oh, yeah.
Normally, I probably waited standing up.
I see that. I like the presentation. They see the police. I like that. Very, very nice.
I love it.
He wants that one.
Keep that one, then.
Can we get the sample?
It looks more comfortable than the other one did.
Are you jealous?
Doesn't appear to be.
Are you going to be modeling something, too?
You can model the current vest.
And then I think, dude, if I put everything up here, like theoretically, I could leave something else on my vest. I wanted to see what it's going to be like with everything up here, just to see how bulky it was. I know the thing on my belt, that, I mean, that wouldn't be bad either. So I mean, just give you more options.
And these are more visible, we got a plate on the front, a plate on the back.
Yes, I love that. Yeah, I liked it on the back.
Chief, how many will you get? How many will you get?
We haven't got the bid yet. I hope we can get maybe six.
How much is your grant?
Yeah, they pay half of the, I think it's, not huge, but it helps every year we replace vests, rotate.
And how long does a vest normally last?
We try to make them last five years. That is the, as far as manufacturers go, that is the very pushing.
Five years?
Yeah. I think they recommend three to four.
For safety, yeah.
So this would be something that you potentially could use your use tax money for?
Yeah, potentially, yes. I think we took pictures of those.
Who showed Mr. Payne?
Perfect.
Make him joke.
You don't want to come out of retirement, Mr. Payne?
No, no, no. Well, that's very cool. Thank you so much for coming to share that with us. Really, I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thanks, Tim. Okay, moving on with unfinished. Keep your day job. Cool. Next up, with unfinished business, we have Darren Warnock that's going to talk about the use tax a little bit. He's been working diligently on preparing our pamphlets and working on the video some more.
Good evening, everybody. This was kind of a surprise, so Bill, I don't know if there was something specific you wanted me to focus on, but.
Talk to them about how you put the brochure together, and how we got the video coming.
Sure, well, first of all, with the video, started that probably about early mid-January, sat down with Bill and got some ideas on kind of what we were looking to do to try and inform the public as to what we wanted to have and how to target the public. And so put together the video, and that's about, it's about a little more than a minute long, maybe a minute 30 seconds long. And as for the brochure, kind of the same thing, sat down, you know, and figured out kind of what we wanted to target. And, you know, I believe you have an example of the brochure right there. I made some changes today, and, you know, I'm not sure if that's the exact final copy, but what you see there is kind of what we have right now.
It's kind of this, you're the first ones to preview it. If we determine that this is the final version, we anticipate it going out as a utility bill in the near future. I would like everybody to review it to see if they see anything that appears to be promotional rather than informational. It's, you know, with the various opinions we have on the council, someone may read the same sentence and say, "That's a little promotional, that's a little bit, that's a little bit too much." We'll gladly take those words and try to make modifications to make the brochure truly informational.
It looks sharp, though.
Thank you.
So we can take those home and scrutinize them.
Yeah, you can mark it up, get a red pen out, and mark it up as much as you want. Hopefully not too much.
Thank you, Darren. We appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have a representative here from Super CM.
Now it's your turn.
Now it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Matt Santa. I'm here with Debbie Bruins. She and I are here to talk about the superhero 5K that we're hosting. It's our fifth annual superhero 5K. It will be on April 25th, and we would like to ask that the fees be waived for the use of the civilian on that date.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. And is there any discussion? I know you guys do some great things with the proceeds. I've been to some of your events, and it's wonderful work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Take my hat off to you.
My son always does the one mile.
Awesome, yeah. Well, we do have some exciting news. We will be funding our first $100,000 grant this year. So we funded up to $160,000 to this point, but this year, we're going to fund $100,000. So we're excited about that. Thanks to you all and the support that you give us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Get her down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have some discussion about the Rec Center financing. We're getting closer, I believe.
That's, Mayor, that's a great way to put it, and that's kind of what I'm going to say. Kathy and I have been talking to various groups or individuals as how we will fund the remaining $5 million of Rec Center. What I'm looking for is a simple motion from the city council authorizing and directing Kathy and I to continue and to bring back to the city council either the best or all of the packages that we receive for financing options.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
We think it's, we might be just a little bit early, but I haven't been through financing like this for, you know, five years, I guess, since we did the warehouse. They generally take a little bit longer doing the final packaging than we anticipate. So we don't think we're going to need the money until June or July, but if we get the money now, or at least get the paperwork behind us, the interest will probably begin as a drawdown on a construction loan or something like that.
But we won't be able to lock the final rate in until it's done and closed?
I'm not going to say yes or no to that. I believe we'll be able to get a final number. I hope we'll be able to get a final number.
The numbers we're seeing are pretty good, though.
I'm sorry, are pretty what?
The numbers we're seeing are pretty good, so we're encouraged.
And options include local financing institutions?
Yes and no, and others.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Are there any more questions on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right. Keep working on that. Council concerns, I'll start to my right. Councilman Schiverdecker?
Since nobody needs it, and I have nothing.
Good, Councilman Moore?
Remember, did we put money in the 50/50 sidewalk in the budget this year?
I believe we did.
Well, I was wondering, just out of curiosity, for certain residents about sharing, we was talking about sidewalks, and some of them have long sidewalks to call, I might have been wrong, but call City Hall and ask if they can come and look at it and see if they could share with them fixing their own sidewalks back in areas. I think if we promoted it a little bit, it would probably help, and I think some citizens would be happy to go 50/50 with us to have their sidewalks fixed.
Maybe Darren can put that in the next newsletter.
And. Sort of explain to them the process, how they would go about it.
And my next one was that Mr. Caswell wasn't with us at the last council meeting, was about my nonprofit in the parks, and my thing about membership for the new community building. So, you know, City Board, Park Board, we're going to talk about that, or when are they planning on doing that?
They've actually already met, and so that kind of ties into, all of the department heads have been given the deadline of this Friday, February 14th, to turn in their proposed fee increases. Clay has already met with the Park Board, and we have that information, so you guys will be receiving it. It might be a little rough, and I think it's going to be something that will take time. I don't think you're going to hammer it out anymore. We will have that at the next council meeting.
Very good. Very good. Councilwoman Paesno?
Yeah, I just had a question. With all the winter weather that we've been having and being super cold, do we have any designated shelter areas that we can make sure citizens are aware of, or is it mainly just up to churches and other public areas?
The city does not.
Okay.
Red Cross does. They have some places designated, I believe. Is that right?
I don't know.
Steve, at that.
When we went to that FEMA meeting, Kevin, didn't they talk about that, that there's some places that they've got identified?
Are they in Fulton?
Yes, I believe so. And I would not dare to name where they would be, but if the critical need were to arise, I think they have a plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, right. Yes.
I believe Mr. Payne has an answer for you.
Yes, Mr. Payne?
They have contracts always set up if they decide to open an emergency shelter, like if you have a person who's known in three weeks, and they decide to open a shelter, they have contracts with churches.
Mutual aid agreements.
It's Red Cross contracts. They have a Red Cross folder, and they run all their Red Cross rules. They do not run by the church. They just have spaces designated when they go.
I see. Okay.
Thank you.
I do know that CMCA has a list of various places in town that do open their doors, the community action. They're on call here.
Okay.
CMCA, they have a list of various places. I wouldn't want to call them out by name in case I'm wrong.
Right.
Right.
There are three or four that are open every day.
Great.
Very good. Okay, moving on. Councilman Braun?
I have nothing today.
Councilman Stone?
Not exactly city-related, but I attended a forum last night that the public school district put on concerning their tax levy and bond issue, and there's going to be at least six more over the next three weeks. We had them here for a work session to present to us, and I would just encourage the council, the administration, department directors, and all citizens to attend those over the next two to three weeks. They're very informative. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reclu?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Simmons?
No, I don't.
And Councilwoman Sabater?
I have nothing, thank you.
Very good. Moving on to resolutions, we've got resolution number 3366. Councilwoman Paesno, if you would, please.
Yes. Resolution number 3366, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an amendment to an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., Uble Summit, Missouri, relating to the Stinson Creek TMDL implementation negotiations project, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said agreement. Make a motion to adopt resolution number 3366 at this council.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I see Kyle here to talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, the, this resolution, along with the following resolution, are kind of intertwined. Daryl and Bill actually talked about these, both of these resolutions with the utility board, and the utility board has recommended approval of both of these resolutions. HDR, their contracts with, contract extensions, if you will, with HDR. HDR is our, is and has been our water quality consultants over the last several, several years, dealing with issues at our wastewater treatment plant, Stinson Creek, our MS4, which is our stormwater here in the community. So permits related to both the community's stormwater and sanitary sewer system, along with Stinson Creek. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Sounds like this is coming out of the stormwater tax that we're getting.
The MS, the resolution for the MS4 would, for sure. The TMDL, I would assume would come out of the sewer plant budget, but that's for...
Yes.
Bill's shaking his head, so.
Okay.
Very good. Any questions on that?
This is, and this is where we're trying to figure out where the contaminated, red-colored water is coming from for the most part.
That is, that is a piece, that is a piece of the puzzle. It's all looking at Stinson Creek and letting the health of Stinson Creek kind of guide improvements, and what type of improvements are done in the community or in this watershed. So what you've recently seen in the paper regarding... So what you've recently seen in the paper regarding acid mine drainage with old mines is kind of a piece of that puzzle. It's, it comes from staff and community looking at issues, recognizing issues, and wondering what the heck is it, and how does that affect the water quality of the stream? So one of the results has been, we, we got Department Natural Resources, the Land Reclamation Division up here that deals with abandoned mines and water quality coming out of, out of those mines, up here to take a look at, at a few issues. The red, orange coming out of a couple different areas, and along with, along with clay residual, a whole bunch from, from clay pits in the area. So taking a look at old mines, what kind of water quality is, is coming from those old mines and, and could be hindering the, the water quality of Stinson Creek.
Could you kind of explain what the difference is between the two? Because they're both dealing with stormwater, they're both dealing with HDR.
Right, right. The, the first one, the first one, I'll just label it as, as the TMDL one, and it's, I think it has that, that acronym in it, but it's, it's dealing mainly with the sewer plants. And the sewer plant, you know, we, we went through an upgrade of the sewer plant here, you know, recently, spending about, you know, approximately $10 million there, and that, that was all part of a, you know, one thing that HDR did and helped us negotiate was kind of a phased approach to improvements at, at our wastewater treatment plant. And so after this first phase, the Department Natural Resource, Department Natural Resources then does testing in Stinson Creek, and based upon the results of that testing, and, and how their samples compare to comparison streams, you know, may result in, do we have to do a next, next round of improvements, or potentially another round after that? So there was three phases that were, that were negotiated five years ago or so, and so that, the first one revolves more around the sewer plant and those items. The next one is, is, has MS4 in related, in it, and that, that is stormwater, the City of Fulton's, our municipal stormwater. So any, any runoff going into Stinson Creek, you know, from our community. So we have a stormwater permit with Department Natural Resources, and, and of course, you know, water coming off pavement and, and everything else can affect the water quality of Stinson Creek. So it, it all kind of ties together, but it's one sewer and one stormwater.
Okay. I think I understand.
And this is all still tempered with the, with the quality of the water coming into the town?
Right. From up, from, it is a stream.
Right.
Because the water that we get, the water that comes into Stinson Creek through the town doesn't necessarily start off as pure.
Exactly, exactly right, yeah. That's a piece of the puzzle, yeah.
Thank you.
How often do they test the creek?
Not enough, I would say, but they usually, they try to test it during the spring and fall, is typically when they, they do the biological testing. So there's biological testing and chemical testing, and I don't have a great answer for you on, on how many samples they take, but I could find out.
Do we take our own samples?
The wastewater treatment plant, Anna does take samples, and Stinson Creek, you know, she's, she is looking for them. We also have stream team folks who go out and take, take some samples that, that I would say are low-level type sampling versus what, what DNR would do.
I just know we have some things that are new outside of town that potentially could end up in Stinson Creek.
Yeah, we are very interested in those items, as well as items inside the city.
So do we take samples of Stinson Creek before it enters Fulton?
One, so the Department Natural Resources, one of the things that, that HDR and, and city staff, I would say negotiated, was when they were talking about taking samples. Most of their samples were related to down, down near our wastewater treatment plant. We requested that they take a sample where Stinson Creek enters the City of Fulton, so we could see what kind of, what they, what out of town comes into us.
Right. Yeah, so we don't get hit for something that really we can't control, really.
But we do, and we are getting hit for that.
I know, yeah.
Right.
That's, that's why we're having many of the meetings that we're having.
Okay.
I was recently with the Deputy Director of the Department of Natural Resources, and a question I asked her was, are we getting credit for the crappy water coming into town, or are we getting penalized? And she said, we should be, it will, it will be given consideration when issuing our sewer plant permits. She didn't really answer the question, but she gave me hope.
Better than we've ever heard before.
Better than we've ever heard before. All right, thank you.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? We'll move on to Resolution 3367. Councilman Moore, if you would?
Resolution Number 3367, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an amendment to an agreement with HDR Engineering Industry of Lee's Summit, Missouri, relating to the MS4 permitted stormwater management plan, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said amendment. I move this for passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We've sort of heard about this. Does anyone have any more questions or discussion about this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good, that passes. We'll move on to 3368. Councilman Schuberdecker?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 3368, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the contract with ECTON Construction of Montgomery City, Missouri, for the 2020 Jefferson Street curb and guttering renewal project. Make a motion to adopt 3368 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We were pleased with the bids that came in, or at least the one that we accepted. Are there any questions or discussion on this?
Have we done, and I'm relatively sure Kyle has, but at basically $37,000 cheaper than the next bid? Have we done our homework on this? Have we used these people before? Because I see on one side, on the base bid, they're extremely low, but then the, then the alternate, alternate bid is a little bit more than the cheapest one.
Yeah, it kind of sends a, you know, red flag at you when, you know, when you first see it.
Cheaper isn't always better.
Right, when you first see it. The, these guys, several years ago, constructed Nickel Street parking lot, you know, behind Beck's in there, and my staff worked closely with them and, and had really good, really good comments about, about their work and their work with them, that they, they did a good job for what they were asked to do, and, and so we have worked with them in the past. We did call and question, you know, the bid, and we were even talking about the price of concrete and everything else, you know? You kind of feel weird on the phone, or you, do you know what the price of concrete is? Yeah, that type of thing, but they are, they're, he, he's comfortable with his bid. He has a slip form machine, and he thinks that, that maybe the others weren't slip-forming it, that they were hand-forming it, so he's comfortable with the bid, and solid on it, and looking forward to doing the job.
$37,000 just caught my eye, the difference to the next lowest.
That's a good question. Thank you for...
Thank you, Kyle.
...easing our minds a little bit, Kyle. Okay, any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That passes, very good. We'll move on to ordinances. First readings, we have Bill Number 1577. Councilwoman Seibacher, please.
Yes. Bill Number 1577, an ordinance allowing the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of Fulton, Missouri, between April 19th, 2020, and April 25th, 2020, and for subsequent Show Me Green Sales Tax Holidays unless otherwise enacted by the City Council by ordinance. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1577 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We think this is maybe the last time we have to do this.
We're very hopeful, I'll say that, yeah, very hopeful until the Department of Revenue maybe changes their mind again. I did express concern with having spoken to multiple people about this and been given completely different answers. So I talked to one of the managers there, and they felt that by, basically including a clause that would say, "We want to opt ourselves in until the City Council chooses by ordinance to opt out," that that should suffice their need.
Very good. So this ordinance would reflect that. Is there any more discussion on this? I will call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Will we still be talking and announcing the dates at the council, even though it's set?
We could put it in announcements, that's not a problem.
Okay. I mean, I just think it's important, right now, we, we put it out there where the dates are, but then going forward, we're, if we, if we don't have to talk about it at all, the dates could slide by somebody.
Well, the newspaper could be in the papers, things like that, yes.
Thank you.
Are you indicating people watch this?
Well, I'm indicating that...
Listen?
Yeah, you'd be surprised.
Now, I know that we have a lot of...
I get lots of responses, I know people did watch it streaming.
Very good. So we did get that passed. We'll move on to Bill 1578, and Councilman Simmons?
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1578, an ordinance allowing the back-to-school sales tax holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of Fulton, Missouri, beginning the first Friday in August and continuing through the Sunday immediately following, and for subsequent back-to-school sales tax holidays unless otherwise enacted by the City Council by ordinance. I make a motion, we approve Bill Number 1578 to advance to second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Very similar to our last bill. Do I have any questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, moving on to second reads, we have Bill Number 1576. Councilman Braun, if you would?
Bill Number 1576, an ordinance repealing Chapter 62, the historical preservation Fulton City Code, and enacting a new chapter in lieu thereof. I make a motion to put Bill 1576 for third reading at next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Thank you. So this keeps getting tossed around a little bit. We did get some feedback from our citizens in the last week, which is great. I don't know where everybody's at, if we want to move this forward, or think about it some more, ask for more feedback. Councilman Simmons?
Mr. Garrett brought up some concerns with the ordinance. Sounds like some specific concerns. Would it be possible to have you and maybe the Historical, Historical Commission, or maybe just Mr. McDaniel's, get together to try to resolve those over the next couple of weeks, and then we revisit this at the next meeting?
Could we table this at this time?
It could be tabled.
You could table this at this time. I would say if there are going to be modifications to the ordinance, it would probably be a good idea if the Historical Preservation Commission as a whole is included in on that, and that they could make another recommendation when they feel comfortable with bringing it back to the council.
I mean, it, from some of the comments that I've read, it, it sounds like the concerns aren't necessarily with the changes that are being enacted in Chapter 62. It's people have questions about, about all of it, that they're, maybe they just weren't aware, and so I'm, I'm thinking rather than, you know, for me personally, it, it sounds like an opportunity for the Historical Preservation Commission to do some informational-type things to the public, and to provide that information to the public of what they've been doing for decades now, not just this one change. I mean, the, the one change that we're doing is, is what they're being requested of from, from their state counterparts, and the things to continue. I mean, we've had historical districts here for years and years. This isn't anything that's brand-new. There's some new language to it, and some new recommendations being made, but it sounds like we have opportunity for information.
And I'm sure from the commission's standpoint, that they might be frustrated that people are just now hearing about this. They've been working, y'all have been working on this for...
They have, yeah.
A very long time, we've...
Some of these comments that I read, to me, were more of leave-me-alone type comments, but Mr. Garrett seemed to bring up some very specific questions. I'm not sure what they are, but we don't need to get into them right now, but if he can sit down with the Historical Commission, or, and try to resolve those, then we could hear back.
So if we table it, then we wouldn't have enough time to get that done? It would, it would die, is that...
Basically, we could table it, and then at the next meeting, if it wasn't taken off the table, it would die, so...
It could be tabled as many times as we need it to be tabled.
That's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I've worked, currently with, working on that, I have a, I have a problem about tableing it. It ain't like it's a brand-new bill, it's been around for years. I would sugge, I would like to suggest that Mr. Garrett get with, with Dennis, give him his concerns, and then Dennis and David and the, and the mayor and Mr. Johnson sit down, we take a look at what his concerns are, because no matter what your feedback out there, someone's gonna have a problem about something in it. So let's just move on for the third reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting, unless we find something terribly wrong in it.
Well, and, and in turn, I have an issue with us trying to mandate to residents and businesses within our community what they can and can't do with their own property and their own businesses. I, I have an issue with that. I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. McDaniel, and, and we, I told him the same thing, what my concerns were with it, why I voted the way I did. I'm not changing my vote the way I, the way I voted for it, it's, I don't think it's right.
And I'll repeat the same thing that I did last time. I'm not changing my vote either. If we're going to be in a historical community, then we have to have a Historical Preservation Commission, and we have to have the ordinances that go along with it.
But I will agree with Councilman Stone on the point that maybe we should put out through our website or something a little bit more advertised about the historical ordinance, and, and try to explain to people, you know, we're not trying to force you, you have to do it our way, because there's nothing in it really says you have. It's recommendations.
I think in reading the concerns, it's the, it's the mandated review.
Yes.
Not that the results are binding, but that, some of that, you're absolutely correct, whoever said that, that some of this information has already been in the ordinance for quite some time.
Yes.
One of the biggest changes would be that mandated review, and that seems to be what has really caused a lot of concern for people. I feel like internally, we've tried to come up with, with some ideas as to how do you, how do you bring both sides together, how do you make some sort of compromise while still allowing the HPC to, you know, provide their input and to provide education to the community, but also easing the concerns that our property owners and our real estate professionals have as well. Maybe it's an opportunity where there's a pamphlet... Maybe it's an opportunity where there's a pamphlet that's made available. And if you live in a historic district, we as the city are required to provide you that information. And then if you choose to interact or, you know, go to the HPC at that point, that would be something that you have the option to do. And I think just in reading some of the comments and concerns from people, they don't like having to be told that they could be delayed for up to thirty days.
Sure.
They want to have the option to either take those recommendations or not. So, and at the same time, that doesn't necessarily suffice the CLG, although we haven't really been in compliance since the dawn of time. So I don't know that that's necessarily...
But that's what we're trying to get to.
Right.
You know, we're, we're trying to...
But even with this ordinance, we won't, we won't be getting there either.
Right. It's closer.
I would, I would encourage the council members, because we have heard that this was modeled after Washington, Missouri's ordinance. I would encourage everyone to go read the Washington, Missouri ordinance. This is, after reading both of them, and I read them both again last night, this is nothing like Washington's. That's my opinion.
So the fact that we have reached out to the community for input, I think we need to take that under some kind of advisement. And I don't know if Mr. Garrett, Mr. McDaniel are willing to kind of get together and see if you can work out some of the issues. I'm seeing some nodding of heads there. So hopefully over the next couple of weeks, we can come to some common ground and possibly find something that's agreeable. And if, and if two weeks comes and we've not satisfied everybody on this, we can, we can either vote it down, table it at that time.
Sounds good.
But...
Well, do you think two weeks is enough time for you two gentlemen to...
Or...
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
We understand that, yes.
Very good.
The comments that I read, one, you're not going to get a lot of comments from people that say, oh, I love this.
Right.
Okay? You're only going to get the negative comments. A lot of the comments are, don't bother me, leave me alone. Mr. Garrett came up with, I've got some specific concerns. I think we need to resolve those specific concerns, whatever they may be, could be major, could be minor, I don't know. We might find that they're an interpretation concern. I don't know. I think we need to resolve those.
So are you making a motion to table the bill?
Well, we're, we're being told that two weeks is not going to be really potentially long enough.
Well, if we don't table it and it goes for a vote and the vote passes and it moves on for third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
You can table it before you vote on it.
You can either vote it down, we can table it, then we can table it then, you can, so there's, I mean, there's...
I'll make a motion, we table the, this ordinance until the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Oh.
Okay. We've got a motion to table this. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I still disagree on that. If you ain't going to do it in two weeks now, you can wait and see unless they do find time to get together and you can table it at the next council meeting if it's...
There's other facilities in town that might be interested also to get in on this.
If we start opening it up, and I understand everybody has their complaints, we did an animal ordinance, it took three years because we kept opening it back up because everybody had this complaint and you can't satisfy everybody's complaint. Well, of course.
But you can mandate to, to somebody to do something. I disagree with that. I disagree that we're mandating that they have to go... I disagree that they're mandating that they have to put another step in the process to... I, I, I just believe it's wasted time. If they're not going to follow the, the guidance by a pamphlet or anything else, they're not going to follow it by taking thirty extra days.
It's not a fair assumption either.
Well, it's my assumption and that's what I'm assuming and I can have that. Thank you.
And I think we've all had a, all of us here have had a very good opportunity to look this over and we've got our opinions on it. Let's see what the guys can work out in the next little bit here and possibly have something that's agreeable. We, we can do whatever we want to at our next meeting. I've got a motion on the floor to table this a second. Is there any more discussion on tabling this bill tonight? Yeah, there you go. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Could you please raise your hands?
For which?
More no.
Okay.
So I have Stone as a no, Braun, Pay Snuck, and Moore. And Mary, were you a no? I'm sorry.
I'm a yes.
You're a yes, okay. So that would be four. So we are at a tie.
Yep.
Wow. I'd get to make that break.
We're going off into the other room.
So I think it's a moot point whether we table it or not. We're still going to discuss it at the next meeting. That being said, I will vote no.
Okay, therefore, the ordinance is not tabled. So we do have a motion on the floor to move it to third reading at the next meeting.
Very good.
We will need a vote on that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Only one no? Two no's? Thank you. That's fine.
Very good. We will work on this some more, guys. That's all we can do. Announcements, we do have one, the city, next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at six-thirty. And I do have a need for executive session about ongoing litigation. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn this executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Okay, and before everyone gets up, we will need to take a roll call. All right, Ms. Ricklue?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Pay Snuck?
Yes.
All right, we will enter executive session.